Oh, it's on. It's recording.
This is the record session of the Mayor and Council of the City of Bisbee County in Cochise, the state of Arizona to be held on Tuesday, October 16th, 2018 at 7:00 PM in the Cochise County Board of Supervisors hearing room located at 1450 Melby Lane, building in Bisbee, Arizona. Ms. Carnada, would you please call the room?
Councilmember Anna Klein?
Here.
Councilmember John Hanson?
Here.
Councilmember Frank Davis?
Here.
Mayor David M. Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Mel Hader?
Here.
Mayor Portem Douglas?
Here.
Councilmember Nate Winstrom?
Here.
City staff, Robert Smith. City manager, Ashley Coronado. City clerk, Carrie Beckman. My manager. Julian Wallace, operations manager. Alberti Chavo, police chief. George Castillo, fire chief. Great Hanson, city attorney.
Thank you, ma'am, and thank you, everybody who came here. For our moment of silence, I'd like us to take a moment of silence for the family of Dr. Blakely, who passed away this morning. He was a member of the school board, and his dedication and service to Bisbee will certainly be missed. And so we all take just a moment, please. Thank you. Please stand and join me in prayer.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and the Republic of America, one nation without borders, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First under proclamations, I do have a proclamation. And the proclamation is National Business Women's Week. In conjunction with the National Foundation of Business and Professional Women's Associations, and by the power vested in me, David M. Smith, Mayor of the City of Bisbee and the State of Arizona, I do hereby proclaim the week of October 15th through October 19th, 1918, to be declared and recognized as National Business Women's Week. In the City of Bisbee, and I urge our leaders of business, industry, education, and public affairs to join in the observance of the week by paying tribute to the many contributions made by all women in business and the professions. I do hereby set my hand and cause the great seal of the City of Bisbee to be affixed to this document dated the 16th day of October, 2018. And Ms. Roscoe? And we have Kathy Wright. And do we have anybody else? We're not sure. Yes, say a word.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a very bittersweet proclamation for us. For the last several decades, a person in this place taking the, receiving this proclamation was Laverne Williams, our hubby mayor and president of the longtime member of Bisbee Business and Professional Women. We would also, on this evening, name the women of achievement and the woman of the year. I think John Hanson here was Woman of the Year a couple of years ago, and Kathy was last year perhaps? Anyway, this year, we've decided instead of having that recognition, that we're going to recognize Laverne as our Woman of the Century. We'll have her recognition luncheon at Cafe Roca on November 10th. You all are invited to attend as we recognize her long-term commitment to Bisbee Business and Professional Women and to the City of Bisbee as our community. Thank you.
I want to announce, most people are aware that I'm pulling item number seven. The reasons for pulling item number seven are that a detailed study is being done by Chief Castillo.
It's number nine, right?
Number nine. Thank you. I appreciate that. Can't remember my name right now. Number nine, detailed studies being done by Chief and the Fire Marshal regarding the hydrant placement, this is the fire hydrant placement, between the Scotty and Humphrey property. And I want to indicate, because the questions have been asked several times, just because it's been there for however many years it's been there, doesn't mean that it is there under the precedent fire codes and restrictions. Codes are changed on, in many cases, an annual basis simply because there are new reasons for change. The second reason is that there are outstanding public comments, public requests for documents, and that I believe specifically, there's several on, if we have to unfortunately indicate that this situation has sides, that there are several outstanding on both sides, and that I feel that it is very important to have all data in so that all members of the council will be fully informed with all data available before any type of a resolution is brought forward. I believe that to do otherwise is not fair to either party. It is contrary to providing a fair process by the council. And last, I will be calling for a special session of the council which will be devoted entirely to this one project. And at that particular time, both, again, both sides will have the opportunity to address councilmen to provide the data that they feel is necessary. So that will be in the future when all public records requests have been answered and when the Fire Department has been able to provide a comprehensive review of the existing fire We have several members called the public, and the first will be Mr. John Sky. Welcome, Mr. Sky.
Good evening. My name's John Sky, and I'm an owner and builder of 429D Laundry Hill. I'd just like to point out that the sale of the property was taken off the agenda for reasons that have nothing to do with the sale of city property. This item has been approved twice by the planning and zoning, and now has been put on and taken off the city council agenda twice due to outside political agendas. I have been dealing with this issue for over seven months now. I've been bending over backwards to help the city. I've had engineers inspect the house from butters to the roof to ease attention of the threats of lawsuits. Why are, why are the people threatening lawsuits being rewarded while I'm being attacked because of my past? Why was, why was the fire chief told not to talk to me? I tried to get with him for weeks prior to this. He was told not to give me, basically, I asked him to just give me the same thing in writing that he gave to the newspaper, nothing more, nothing less. He was told not to do that. The other points that I'd like to make is, you know, I live here full-time. I'm building here. I've got a family here. I've been here all my life. I'm just trying to do what I need to do. This fire hydrant thing came up later. I've actually figured out many different avenues that we could do to solve that problem. I tried to get people up there. No one wants to go up there and talk to me about it. There's pre-existing fire hydrants. But the fact of the matter remains that the fire hydrant had nothing to do with the sale of city property. That's what was on the agenda, what was going to be on the agenda. There's no fire safety guarantee in Bisbee. So if you move the, the fire hydrant, what are you going to put a guarantee on everybody's house that their house is going to be safe? Fire's been an issue here for, ever since it was built. And then the other thing that I don't understand is, the Humphreys have already said that they're going to sell and move, and then they want to sue the city due to the loss of how much their house is worth. And then you're talking about putting in a hydrant right next to their parking that's going to take away from their parking, just like it's going to take away from Rodney Smith's parking. What's that going to do to the, how much their house is worth before they sell it? And then they're just going to use that against you later on when they file a lawsuit against the city. I'm trying to do everything I can to stop the lawsuit from the city, and I'm the only one that's getting backdoored on this deal.
Thank you, Mr. Sky.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor and Council?
Welcome, Mr. Conover.
501B Bailey Hill. So I've been on the hill for 38 years, and I just don't really understand why this was pulled from the agenda tonight. I think that this should have went forward as planned. A lot of disappointment, I feel, but maybe things aren't being done. I just, I think fairness is key in all this, so I don't think there's really much more that I can say here. I hope that ulterior motives for neighbors doesn't influence what should be sold, because if they're trying to say that the hydrant is the reason why this whole thing is proceeding, it's just, it just doesn't seem right. That's all I got.
Moving on to general business accounts payable.
I move that we pay accounts payable in the amount of $103,291.16.
Thank you all. Do we have questions?
Just for clarification, Mr. Wallace, on the synergy petroleum, I thought we were getting, I thought we were getting fuel from the county, or are we just getting their price?
No, we are, we are, we're not at that point yet. The vehicles that we are leasing from the county, part of that leasing payment, that lease payment, is for the fuel from them. However, we still have diesel and lots of other vehicles and stuff that are not part of that county deal. So that's what pays for that synergy for coming. We're working on that as well with Ruben from the county, just not there yet. Got a lot of different things in the air right now, and that's not my top priority as it is, so.
Okay, I was just confused on that. And then one more question. How long are we going to require services from Rain for Rain?
Oh, that's, that was, it's done. And I'll explain that for the agenda I have, explain as much as I know about that whole thing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilmembers have questions? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion. Have we had a motion? I entertain a motion. Those, those in favor of the motion, and second, which I second, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. Motion passes. Do you have a motion? Item number two, consent agenda, there's three items. Item A, approval of the resignation of Noah Soubey for the planning and zoning commission. B, approval of a park facility and right-of-way use permit for the use of this department for Halloween and base and moving in the park on Saturday, October 27th, 2018, from 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM. C, approval of a special event, a license application submitted by the Bisbee Hospital Association for an event to be held at St. Stephen's, Nemanha Church Hall, 216 Park Avenue, Bisbee, on Saturday, December 8th, 2018, from 4:00 PM to 12:00 AM. Robert Seaman applicants. Do, any member of the council wish any of these people for further discussion? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda, items A, B, and C.
I second that.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir. We have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Carnada?
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Hades? Councilmember Hades? Mayor Portem Dunn?
Aye.
Councilmember Winstrom?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye.
Motion passes. Do you have a motion? It's catching up here. I'm giving it to you guys. Long, sorry. Many phone calls. Okay, we have no open business, we have new business Sullivan. Item number three, discussion and presentation on who Local First Arizona is, their work in Bisbee, and the recommendations made to council. Welcome, Ms. Hudson.
Thank you. So as you mentioned, my name's Rachel Hudson, and I'm the outreach coordinator for Local First Arizona in Cochise County. I presented before, but I just wanted to inform some people about our organization and some of our goals and outcomes, because my position has been here a little bit over a year now, and I'd like to show you what's come from that. So our history, in 2003, Kimber Lanning started defining their Local First Arizona because she saw too much money leaving the city, and she also saw a broken system where we favored corporations over local businesses. So from this, the Local First Arizona Business Coalition, or 501(c)(6) came about, and this tried to grow advocacy for local businesses, so got procurement policies to ensure that local Arizona businesses received different bids over outstate. They also have business connections, trying to connect business-to-business sourcing, and also place-making, connecting people to place and their homes. You realize that there were gaps from this. You can't just say buy local when there's issues in the system. And so our 501(c)(3), our Local First Arizona Foundation, came about, and this focuses on the idea that Arizona's economy exceeds, or succeeds, when everyone has opportunities to lead healthy and productive lives. So our programs from this is our Cores de Locaux, it's a Hispanic business accelerator program and business membership. This takes primarily Spanish-speaking individuals through a course for business acceleration and shows them how to get credit, matches their savings, gives them fair interest rates, because a lot of times there's prejudiced lending rates from banks with minorities, and also helps them get the right amount of insurance that they need. We also wanted to focus on local foods to increase the healthiness of our communities. So we have the Good Food Finder, which allows you to find any sort of local food in the state of Arizona, completely free, restaurants, bars, growers, producers, et cetera, it's all just sit on there. And we also have a farm-to-chef connection every year, which focuses on connecting chefs and to our local producers to try and do more sourcing through that. And then the last part is our rural development. So this started with localizing supply chains, trying to do more of that business-to-business sourcing in the local communities, especially rural. So if you have a business, make sure you're purchasing from Bisbee office supplier WISP or hiring a local accountant in their community. We also have Science Happens Here, which is a science program for ages three through, or third grade through sixth grade, to get them excited about STEM in rural Arizona communities. It's a little competition and collecting cards. We also have the Rural Policy Forum, which every year is hosted in different rural communities to bring together community leaders, nonprofits, any sort of person within the community who's interested in rural. And we've actually had representatives from Bisbee there for the past three years presenting and trying to promote rural development and collaboration. And finally, Weekend Zona, that is a weekend getaway that we do throughout different rural communities, because $6 billion is spent by Arizonans every year traveling to California. We try to redirect a portion of that back into our rural communities. We did one in July in Douglas that I ran, and it had 14 guests and raised, or put directly into the Douglas economy about $5,000, and we have one secured for Bisbee to do, and we do that in the slow seasons to help compensate for the loss of tourism. So our mission is to seek, promote, and celebrate a vibrant, sustainable Arizona economy by educating citizens about local business ownership, social equity, cultural diversity, environmental friendship, and collaboration. And since we've come here, we've heard a lot, they're outsiders, they're from Phoenix, why would we give our money to a nonprofit with an headquarter here? Well, we actually have offices all throughout the state, because we're not focused on Phoenix, we're focused on uplifting the entire Arizona state. So our offices are in Phoenix, Tucson, Flagstaff, Cottonwood, Bisbee, and Globe Miami, and the last three are all rural. Then our impact throughout the state from that has been the procurement policies for local businesses that I mentioned here before. Science Happens Here, both in Stafford and Cottonwood for the past three years. Weekend Zona throughout the state, Bisbee, Douglas, Globe Miami, Verde Valley, Pintop Lakeside, which is directly impacting those communities, from $10,000, or $2,000 to $10,000 going directly into those places. And we also have the Buy Local campaigns. I ran Independent Week in July. We have Buy Local Month coming up. I'll talk a little bit more about that later. And those are going on in Bisbee, Globe Miami, Cottonwood, Tucson, Flagstaff, Verde Valley, and we just started them in Casa Grande and Douglas. We also have a Cores de Locaux program, which was moved down to Tucson, it was originally only in Phoenix. And we just had our first round of graduates, 12 graduates, which means we have 12 new minority owned businesses in Tucson. So our work in Bisbee so far started in 2017, when Ibisbee hired Local First Arizona for Kimber Lanning and Carrie Lee Cox, took out surveys throughout all of Bisbee. This was done by lists they received from Ibisbee, and they pursued those people. And then when I came on, I started sending out online surveys, so we had a total of about 64. We hoped to have more, but between the names that we got and the people that were responding, that's what we ended up seeing. And the goal of these interviews was to determine are local businesses capable of delivering a great experience to both locals and tourists? What do people think of Bisbee on the outside? What's the perception from the residents here? Do local businesses have resources and support they need to support increased tourism? And is their leadership at Bisbee capable of the kind of collaboration and strategy needed to become a thriving tourism destination? And I would like to address this last part, the thriving tourism destination, because I know a lot of people don't particularly love all the tourists coming here. But right now, we don't have the support from locals to sustain the businesses as necessary. So until we see that local support to be able to maintain our downtown, we need tourists. We need that money to come in, because we're not seeing it from our locals. So some of the outcomes and four challenges that were identified were inconsistency, this was messaging and marketing. This also goes along with the lack of collaboration. There's so many different organizations putting out different marketing efforts or different information, instead of bringing all of those resources together to try and get the message out further. We also have economic leakage for local businesses, locals traveling to Tucson or Sierra Vista or shopping online or Amazon, instead of supporting our local businesses. And there's a workforce gap. This comes from there not being an higher level of jobs for people leaving high school or only a few amount of jobs, or substance abuse is what we identified. And some of the recommendations included short-term, mid-term, and long-term goals. They included choosing an organization to funnel all of our calendar and community events, so there's one source. We talked about doing this through a high school program and trying to get a class where students could learn web development, marketing, design, and just have one place that wasn't a biased, random thing where all people could go to get different events. We also recommended a citywide Buy Local campaign, which I've been doing here for the past year. You might have seen some of the World Local, or Cores de Locaux, or bookmarks. Some of the other ones included capacity workshops and develop overall strategies for business services such as plumbers, lecturers, carpenters, to help them learn those skills that the pool of residents here. And you should all have a spreadsheet, it's color-coded, it tells you short-term, mid-term, long-term goals. Do you guys have any questions about any of those, or just wanted to see if we could address it at the end as well? Give you all some time. So so far, what I have done is been doing MythBuster campaigns, it's been going on the past few months, where it shows cost-effective ways to shop local. There's this strong misconception that local is more expensive, and time and time again, I've been able to prove that that's not true. I did one for Starbucks versus Bisbee Coffee Company. Consistently, Bisbee Coffee Company was cheaper. BND versus Lowe's, BND was cheaper except for a travel, which was a dollar more. And then I'm doing one for Circle K versus Bisbee Bedrage and Style of Fuels, and for beer, gas, liquor, and wine. Style of Fuels and Bisbee Bedrage is cheaper across the board than Circle K. I've also been doing blog posts about Bisbee and our local options, and this has been shared on our website and on our social platforms, which reaches over 150,000 people. I've also been sending out newsletters about some of our events, some of the community events that are going on, and it's been out the first Wednesday of every month. And since I've been here, I started those in about January, and the list has grown from 21 to 225. I've also been holding Buy Local campaigns, Independent Week was in July. Buy Local Month will be coming up, and you should have a sheet on that as well. It's about consumers can bring a passport into a business that's participating, and if you spend money in that business, you market with a sticker. And then if you spend money in five stores, or spend $150, or turn it into a raffle to win local gift cards or brand prize, it's a great way to track local revenue. And in Verde Valley last year, it was $17,000 in revenue for local businesses, and Flagstaff the year before, $30,000. So we're replicating that here this year. We also did Urban Local Outreach, where I've been going to libraries, different meetings with different organizations and groups to tell them why it's important to shop local. And we hosted a Be Local Blog Party with Subway Underground in September, where we saw over 210 bees, where they learned how to bank local, shop local, eat local, Cafe Roca dominated food, and also drink local, too. Stone Brewery was selling some of their canned beers. And then I hold mixers, I've had three so far. The first one had about 80 attendees, and the last two have had around 60. This encourages business-to-business local sourcing, and also learning more about the organization. So these are some of the materials that have been presented by Local First, and then it's one of our mixers. So why does this matter? Small scale, it's money in the economy. So for every $100 spent in a locally owned business, 43 remains in the economy. When it's spent with a chain, it's only 13, and when it's spent with Amazon, it's even less. It also translates into jobs. Every $10 million in sales in the U.S., if you spend that with an independent retailer, 110 jobs are created and maintained. Chains, 50 jobs, and Amazon, only 14. We're not the only people that found these results. The Cochise County Health Department did a county-wide survey in 2017 and found similar results with the good health jobs and healthy economy being the most important factor that they, the citizens will believe will improve the quality of life in the community. So why have we asked for money or support from the city? Local First has actually invested nearly $30,000 in the Bisbee through money for the survey and the Vista program, which I am currently in. And by having the city pay into this, we're hoping to see an investment and advance the work of building a better economy and collaborating within the community. Local First Arizona is prepared to invest $10,000 more for the proposal that you'll see in front of you, and has asked me to work on finding grants to help cover some of that as well. So so far, the money that has been spent by Bisbee through the economic development lineup from Ibisbee committed has been $800 to originally start the surveys, and then $397.25. That covered half the Buy Local materials that I showed you earlier. Local First paid the other half of that. And then the $6,500 was in 2018, and that was from Ibisbee to complete the surveys and offer the reports. And the breakdown on February, Ibisbee's portion of the interviews was $3,000. The total cost was $10,000, the $7,000 of that was covered by Local First. This includes travels, trips, lodging, all of that. Then April, $2,500 for the initial recommendations and presentation that happened for council. And then July, there was $1,000 for the workshop and second city council presentation, again, lodging, trips for two people. Kimber mentioned that she offered to bill $350, but Ibisbee offered to compensate more because they give out a because they didn't count much of the travelers costing. They also paid Local First case Carol Lee Cox $1,800 for her portion of the work, and covered her travel and lodging through the money that was received from Ibisbee. Again, that's the Economic Development Line Item within the budget spent in the past two years. It's gone up to $5,000 this year. So why Bisbee? Why are we here? We want to see Bisbee succeed. It's an awesome place. I've loved living here. And by supporting local businesses in these efforts, you increase the quality of life of the citizens, you support Bisbee's local economy, and you build a connection to place. So when people feel a connection to place, they're more likely to vote, more likely to volunteer, to give charitably, and to pay taxes. So how can you help build a better economy? If you support the Local First efforts to reduce inconsistency, economic leakage, workforce gap, and lack of collaboration, and vote every day with your wallets. If you shift just 10% to local businesses, then it's been shown that the Institute of Self-Alliance did a study that if it's the size of a city the size of Tucson shifted 10% of their spending, they have certain outcomes. I adjusted that to the size of Bisbee's population, and if that would occur, there would be 800 new jobs created, $26.5 million in sales tax increase, and $65 million in total revenue. And it's not shifting or just spending 10%, it's shifting whatever you currently spend. So say you spent 20, go to 30, say you spent 80, go to 10. And then show up to conversations around policy that impact your economy. This is further information. That is my email. To contact me, you can subscribe to our newsletter that I mentioned that is sent out. We also have websites. Bisbee has a specific page, we have our Local First page, and our Local First Arizona Foundation page.
Thank you. Council questions, Ms. Haskins?
Just a lot of information. Very short amount of time.
Yeah, been doing a lot.
Yes, you are. And we really appreciate it. Hearing of questions there may be, and we'll give over to you. So thank you so very much.
Thank you.
I have a report. Discussion of possible approval of an application to APS for $5,000 in financial support for the Bisbee Science Lab, a project that is Science Exploration Research Center to develop and evaluate to public engagement a series of bilingual, science-based exhibits and experiences that will inform exhibit development for permanent search. Council approval includes submission of the application, the acceptance of an award if offered, and the expenditure funds as defined in the application. Ms. Natalie Green.
Thank you. Good evening there, Council. It's great to be up here again because we are moving at a brisk pace. So I expect that you'll be seeing a lot of us in the next few months. Our board met today to give its approval for the APS application that's before you. The APS has two different funding provisions. One is through their community giving program, that's out of their corporate offices, and there is a limit of $5,000 for those applications. And they're ongoing, they receive those at any time, and make a decision within 40 days per seat. So the deadline for their applications for this fiscal, their fiscal year is November 1st. So we're going to get in for that period. We anticipate, though, also applying to your foundation at a later date where the maximum award amount is significantly higher. So we'll be talking with them again. We spoke with Mr. Richard Rosales, who's been on our advisory group for a couple of years now, who encouraged us to apply. So we're hopeful that he and his colleagues will look favorably on this application. The application as mentioned is for $5,000. In your packet, you have a budget, where that $5,000 is in one of the APS categories for expenditure. We've selected curriculum development because it most defines what we want it for, which is exhibits. I do want to ask the council tonight, though, to allow me to make one change. I'd like to reduce that amount to $4,000 and add $1,000 under category F, which is equipment purchase, rental, and maintenance. And the reason I'd like to move that is in taking possession of 24 Main Street as a lieutenant, we have a $1,000 deposit that wasn't budgeted for through our USDA grant. So we'd like to use APS money for that deposit. So with permission to change that and your agreement to allow us to apply, that's the APS grant. We have to answer questions.
Questions, Council? There's no action, though.
No.
Hearing them?
I move to approve an application to APS Community Giving Program in the amount of $5,000, the accepted award if offered, expenditure of funds awarded in support of Bisbee Science Lab project of Science Exploration and Resource Center.
Second?
With the amendment that Ms. Green...
Thank you.
You still said... We have a motion to be upheld. Ms. Cornet?
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Councilmember Hansen?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Mayor Prokhorov?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
I remember, discussion of possible direction of staff regarding the proposed sewer rate plan presented by Dan Jackson. Direction to include getting the administrative and core legislative process necessary to adopt and implement the plan as proposed. Mr. Smith sitting in.
Thank you, Council. Mayor. We had a work session earlier today on the signing. Back in February this year, we began discussions regarding the need to evaluate and create stable long-term rates for the sewer plant. In June of this year, council directed Will Dan to get the work done and create a fee schedule. Now, here in October, we brought him to make a presentation on his findings and suggest to council the consideration of a rate table. Staff would like to move forward with the adoption of a rate schedule. There is a process. There were questions in the work session earlier today. We're happy to bring additional details and information if that's necessary, and we would request direction from the council.
What we're actually then providing, the request is to provide direction indicating that what we heard is what we want. As an example, we want you, the staff, to formally bring back to us for vote.
Yes, sir.
So at this particular point, perhaps it is proper to discuss a... The proposal was that there would be no sewer rate increase for three years, and that then afterwards, based on that table, the rate would be $3 for the first, 3% for the first year, which would be now year four. And then there was, it varied between 3% and 2% after that. There was some discussion that was had was, do we really want to do that? Or do we want to perhaps next year put in a 1.5%? And then the next year, another 1.5% instead of waiting for three years for that 3% to kick in? So I'm trying to, am I capturing fairly what was said?
Does that really have to be part of the notion? Because I thought all we were really doing is saying that we're going to look at this and down the line, if that's what we're going to do, then that could be changed at that point.
Mr. Smith?
Council, if it's possible, we would like some direction to be able to create a new rate table. The council wants something different than what was presented today. So if there is consensus among the council that it wants incremental increases year over year rather than holding the rate steady for a period of three years and then entertaining increases, we're happy to run that, create those numbers, and bring them back for council At some point in time, we need to adopt a notice of intent to create the rate table and start the clock ticking on being able to implement those rates. So at this point, the staff understands that there's a difference of concepts across the council in terms of how the rate table would be structured, and we'd like to provide construction back to Mr. Jackson on how to adjust it so that it can be brought back to council with consideration.
Can we have more than just one? If there...
We can run any number of scenarios.
Staff tends to look at it and says, well, you know, what about this? So that's why I'm saying, why do we really need to have a proposal?
We'll be looking at it when it comes back to us.
We need something to look at.
Well, but you're going to have more than one proposal.
If that's what we ask staff to do, that's what we're discussing.
Right, direction. So if we want to look at a different proposal, we need to say, we want to look at the...
We need to say, as an example...
No, I understand. So what I would like to amend it to say, more than one proposal, because if the staff comes up with something, or somebody else comes up, you know, let's see what else is out there that we may not have...
As I was indicating, perhaps one idea would be Mr. Jackson's proposal, and another idea would be requesting staff provide 1.5% next year, and 1.5% next year, which will provide us the data in front of us at that particular time to make an informed choice and a vote.
Between two. What I'm saying is there may be something else out there.
And it's up to us right now to tell them, it's our, it's our direction to staff, not their direction to us.
I know, I understand that, and I would like to direct the staff to take a look at both of those and see what they are, and then also if there's any other ideas that they may have.
So basically, you're asking for another study?
No.
Oh, you would be.
No, I'm not. I am not asking for another study.
Mayor of Lake, maybe some basis for the original instructions. Mr. Jackson would be helpful moving forward. When staff brought him in and started working, our objective was to produce the least amount of change in utility rates as possible for the longest period of time, yet still be reasonable when it came to an adjustment in the fourth or fifth year. Because typically, you'll see adjustments every fourth or fifth year. If the council wants to see that bubble, as was mentioned earlier, of 3%, 2% smoothed out, we could develop a rate table that is as the mayor suggested, or as Doug suggested, 1.5% a year. We could look over the 10-year period and figure out exactly, based on projected costs, maybe what percentage of a fraction of an increase would be necessary year over year to have the same exact increase every single year. We just, we need something to tell Mr. Jackson in terms of which numbers to run. I'm sure he would run a number of scenarios for you to be able to look at those.
Because I'm just saying that 1.5%. I don't want to restrict it to certain percentages for this first three years or whatever. But, you know, what, based on what you just said, there's an option that he could come up with two or three different proposals. By correct?
Well, and staff's looking for council to put a finer point on that, whatever your policy objectives are for, what your rate payers are going to want to pay. Do you want them paying a small amount every year as prices increase? Or do you want to adjust it in larger increments? Or do you want there to be several years where there's no increases? At the time this was being evaluated, there were a lot of things that still were unknown. We hadn't restructured the wastewater treatment planet finances yet, so we didn't exactly know where we were going to lay it. We're happy to do whatever council would like.
Yeah, I don't think that I'm coming across, or getting across what I'm talking about. And maybe it's just...
If the cities are able to break it down, I guess my person would like them to break it down before we move in. We're moving in, breaking it down, you know? Well, if you look at the proposal and you look at what Mr. Jackson went over today, there was a lot of complexity in the financial business of the wastewater treatment planet, its losses, the increasing operational costs, and the potential for restructuring there then. And not knowing the answer to all of those things within our own finances, our own finance, staffing, we needed to reach out to an expert who could do that. And I think it made sense to go to him. He was, I think, the original author of our rate plan when the plan was created.
Well, any direction we provide back to you, as far as 1%, 1.5%, anything else, is still going back to him.
Right.
For him to provide those figures to us, staff is not sitting down with a calculator and doing it themselves.
He has a fairly complex financial model.
Correct. So the point is, right now, our position is what, or what direction are we providing to staff, asking us to do. And if it, I do believe it's a little too vague to say, I want multiple choices over. I would like to have the original proposal, and I would like at least another choice of evening down that bump of 3%. And that provides the direction.
And if that comes back, and someone says, okay, well, I don't like 1.5%, I want, you know, this. Can you have more than one option for smoothing it out?
I would think... Can you...
That's what I'm getting at, is what are those options?
I was suggesting that it might be between staff, we're providing direction to staff. It would be between staff and him as to if you want that bump evened out, as to how they believe it's the best way to bring that to us. Mr. Hastings?
My understanding was that this is going to have to grant a few votes, a vote here. Yes, I remember, and Mr. Jackson said that at that point there, you know, after the votes of the vote here, then we could take input from the public, and they would be willing to work with us on that issue. And so my understanding, and so there's a possibility, there is a, it's built in flexibility into the process. My understanding is that what we are voting on now is to get the process started.
No, I, I understand that, but we're also putting in there another option. And what I'm saying is the more information that the public has at that public hearing, et cetera, we are.
I think there's only so many options you can, you know, can make out of that. And we've got one that he provided, and I think the one that Councilman Dunn talked about is a reasonable one, spreading that out over the 10-year period, that does make sense. Those are two viable options. And if you have another one in mind, then let's vote, let's bring it up.
The proposal, the proposal was, we'd get three years without paying any...
I'm not stupid.
No, I'm not. Nor interrupting each other. My understanding was that, and from the meeting, from the meeting we just left, my understanding was that, you know, his proposal was that we wouldn't pay anything more on the sewer rate until the fourth year. The first three years, we paid up, no increase. The fourth year, the sewer increase would kick in. Mr. Dunn's question was, instead of waiting for the three years to go by, if we started paying a smaller percentage right away, then when the fourth year gets in, it would not be such a shock to our residents. I think that was, but, no, so it's, you know, paying out there here.
I understand that. But you had actual...
Are you finished?
Yeah. Well, thank you. Because I was interrupted. The thing is, you had specific numbers on that, and that's what I objected to. Because if we were talking about 1%, 1%, 1%, or 1.5%, we keep talking about... we keep talking about that, and that's what I do not want to see, is coming up with, if there's more than one way to do that, that's the reason I'm talking about different proposals on it, or different options, maybe proposal is the wrong word.
Anybody else? I actually understand what you're saying there, but...
Thank you.
Again.
Somebody else.
I just feel like, we're already higher than everybody else. We learned in the state, we're quite higher than a lot of people in state, and I feel like the first three years is only there with no payment, because we said we weren't going to have a payment. We said we could possibly go lower or keep it the same, and I feel like this chart, the only reason it's like this is for that reason alone, because when you look at it, it's jumping kind of up over the next five to six years, so I feel like we just do the, the first three years just to kind of appease everybody, so, I don't know. Have suggestions? To read out there? I don't know. Of course, I was against it at the beginning, so it's kind of, kind of stuck in the margin of art this year, because I felt like this was something you could probably have in the city.
Right, and it was voted on differently, so now it's in front of us, so I'm asking what, what you would like to do with it.
I'm not sure.
Okay. Mr. Dunn, you have something?
I'll just move this forward, I'll make a motion, then we...
We're not, we're not in a, this is discussion.
Okay. I, please.
It's, it's discussion and direction, so we just need to provide direction to, to City Manager, Mr. Smith.
I offer some thoughts about the materiality of the increases we're talking about. Two, three percent's like a dollar fifty a month. So, it is an increase, it's above, and it's more than zero percent, but in terms of your average residential account, it's not a huge amount to increase one year over another. The, the original reason for establishing this schedule this way is because of the uncertainty at the time of knowing exactly where the finances in the wastewater enterprise were going to be. And so, our, our initial effort at restructuring the debt, and our initial effort at restructuring this rate table, was to present the least amount of stress to the citizens of this city as possible, and continue offering wastewater treatment services. So, this schedule reflects that by offering no increases for three years, and then about a dollar forty, a dollar fifty increase on the residential account after that. So, we felt like we achieved the goal we were reaching for, but I don't know that that's consistent with the policy that council would like to have on utility payment.
I think that, listening to the discussion here, perhaps staff would be able to encompass some of the wishes, and that perhaps a trial poll movement can be floated in which we can make sure that the individual members of, that the council's aim has been met in order to be brought to the public, is that possible?
Well, in addition to the rate table that we have, one of the instructions to Mr. Jackson could be to run a model on the basis that every year in the rate table, the increase would be the same for the 10-year period.
Yes.
And we could create that same scenario that he spoke about earlier in the study session, and bring that to council as well. If there's some other shift or direction council would like to give us, we would need Mr. Jackson?
I was going to say, that gives us a place to begin, and this is just the opening of the hearing, so...
This is to get into the question.
Yeah, to get this out, and if you think of some other way you want to have a frame or the numbers displayed, then you can do that. I think that we have those two, we can have those two proposals before us and see, see how they look, unless we have to move forward.
But again, it, it, it allows us to provide to the public to see what they, they, they're the payers, sir.
Mayor, I don't mean to hang up the conversation, but there's one macro concept that maybe isn't universally understood. The rate table that's before you represents a dollar certain total cost for the entire 10-year period, and it reflects a dollar certain projected revenue over a 10-year period. How you spread it out is a matter of policy for council to decide how they want to do that. Our initial take was, present the least amount of change possible for the longest point of time, that's reasonable without presenting material increase when we did have an increase. But we are certainly able to run the model on an incremental increase that's steady in the same year over year. If you want to frontload it, we can frontload it, it just, however you want to divide it up, we're happy to do that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Do we have any clear information to... Item number six, discussion of possible approval of emergency rental of a pump from Rain for Rent for the San Jose Wastewater Treatment Plant for a total cost of eleven thousand eight hundred fifty-six dollars and forty-one cents. Mr. Wallace, Operations Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. In mid-August, we almost had a problem with the wastewater plant, so we used one of the emergency contractors, especially in a, in a utility like wastewater and for cars versus system. We have certain contractors, whether it's KBG, or in this instance, Rain for Rent, because they have the pumps and the, the emergency pumps and portable pumps to use. We had a problem with the plant, we had to rent the pump, we kept it for about a month. The good part is, is yes, we did rent the pump, you pay for it whether you use it or not, we didn't have to use it. I spent a lot of hours down there over the past, over the next week or two, where everyone was able to do some things in the plant, so we didn't have to use the pump. So, as much as I don't like spending twelve thousand dollars almost on something that I didn't have to use, I'm glad I didn't have to use it.
Had we not had it needed, it would have been a lot more than twelve thousand.
Yes, yes, if we had a, a problem with the digestors, had nothing to do with any material or equipment at all, it was a history of improper operation that we had to rectify. And I can say that now, at this date, we have both digestors empty, I moved the personnel, and some different operational things, so we're able to, we're a little bit of a brain here now.
Do we have a motion? And do we have any questions on Saturday, Mr. Wallace? Yes, you have any question?
I noticed that the balance is a minus six thousand dollars.
Yeah, I believe we, we paid a belief on this. Oh, yes, the budget for wastewater, that was proposed, there was a lot of things that was, that were asked for, that were required, that were kind of frivolous, and there were things that should have been budgeted, the correct line item, that was not. So, some things, whether it's equipment repair, or contract services, or some of these other things, they were not budgeted the way they should have been, and that was, that was, you know, that, I'm going to admit that was, that was the form of the board's fault, he didn't correctly budget a lot of different things. And the next thing I want to talk about is the same instance. Overall, the budget, we have the money.
So, you're just going to have to do the line item change?
And that's, you know, actually not even, not my line of change, this, we're going negative, because that way, next year, I know what, we will know what to correctly budget for that line item. That's unfortunately been a history, is, you know, instead of budgeting correctly for a line item, they, they zero out that line item, and they, they move a little money from something else.
You, you had indicated that, you had, you didn't have the money in that line item, but you had the money in the budget.
Yes, overall, so...
Questions valid, where are you going to get it?
Oh, probably operational expenses, use reserves, you know, that, that's, that's where, that's overall in the budget, you know, at the, at the end of the year, when you go, you know, if, income and losses or expenses, it'll, it'll balance out, I'm hoping it'll balance out. Overall, line item, no, next year, we'll, we'll look at that line item, and we'll actually make a correct assumption on that.
Thank you.
Mayor, what's this? Mayor?
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry to jump in, Dwayne, you did a great job on that. There are some concepts that I think that are worthy of reminder to council and the public as we go through this process. We committed that budget, that personnel costs and associated ERAs and benefits will be in a subsection in the Department of Budgets, and they would not be fungible like consumables might be. And so, while we are moving money in consumables and equipment costs, we will not be squeezing personnel lines to make up those differences. And we will be showing the exact activity that occurs in the department, so everybody understands in the real world what's happening with our plans.
Agreed. Thank you. Do we, do, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the emergency rental of the pump from Rain for Rent with San Jose Wastewater Treatment Plant. Total cost is one thousand eight hundred fifty-six dollars and forty-one cents.
The second?
Thank you, we have a motion, item seven. All those in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify aye. Hearing that, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, sir. Item number seven, discussion of possible approval of engineering services from the WLV group for the channel and roadway along Tombstone Canyon for Moon Canyon to Star Avenue. Mr. Wallace?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Let me preface this by saying, we, we might have an issue with Tombstone Canyon Road and the drainage ditch, the New Coach Channel. Tombstone Canyon Road has sunk, and possibly sunk more, over the past few months, and there's a cracking natural retaining wall alongside the channel. So, I went to our engineering services, we selected, pre-selected three engineers a few years ago, actually a couple of years ago, and had a contract to attach for engineering services, and I called them in to begin the study. This is the study for them, they were, they're going to do a lot of hydrology, water flow, they've already done, again, the survey to, to try to see what we can do to mitigate this, because there is a lot of utilities around the area, there's two water lines, a fire and personal line, a four inch gas main, a sewer line, cars, my house. It's, it's actually funny, I can still not that thing sinking for a couple of years, but it didn't look like it sunk anymore until my neighbors across the street parked there, and they're tilted a little bit more. So, we, we, there's a possibility of a large issue, and instead of just doing a portion of the wall, I decided to have the full engineering ported up from bridge to bridge, so that in the future, when we have a, when we go over and start preparing bridges, we have a good wall to tie onto. And with the proximity to the fire station, that's a very important one. When the fire department leaves on a call anywhere other than Old Visby, they generally go up and down because there's less traffic. If something happens there at Tombstone Canyon, that's a, that's a public safety issue, more than anything else. So, I do recommend approval of this.
Do we have any questions, Mr. Wallace?
When you're saying bridge to bridge...
Oh, yes, let me, from Moon Canyon Bridge to Star Avenue Bridge, I'm going to have that section, because that's the, that's the section where this is. That way, we can, you know, some years ago, the wall next to the fire department has some issues, and they, they raised it up. There's a good potential we can do that here as well, but until they actually see why it's sunk, we don't know what we can do to it yet.
And that's a distance of what, all of two hundred feet or so?
Possibly, you know, a little over two hundred feet.
Any other questions?
And the seventeen thousand's currently well within the budget of...
In streets, it's, it's, it's with overall in the budget of streets. We have the sales tax that funds streets and infrastructure. Again, in the line item for contract services, I, I think it was only much over five thousand dollars. However, we have money in the sales tax, overall, the budget to fund things, and this is, and heads up, this is not the only thing. There are two hundred retaining walls that are city-owned that need to be addressed, that I'm going to be proceeding with soon.
Please make sure that goes to the streets and infrastructure.
I, I discussed it with them, but I'm not, I can't wait for them to, to suggest whether or not to use it.
And this potential can come out of her phone, is it?
Yes, as well.
So, the funding is... Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the engineering services from the WLV group for the channel and roadway along Tombstone Canyon from Moon Canyon to Star Avenue.
The second?
Thank you, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, signify by stating aye. Aye, opposed, same side. Hearing that, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Item number eight, discussion of possible production of the city attorney and, if necessary, Arizona Attorney General to review tapes of council meeting of October the second, 2018, Agenda Items Eight and Nine, to determine whether there is evidence of nepotism and a conflict of interest on the part of Councilperson Klein to financially benefit a family member of the Visby Firefighters Association, Local 2146, of which he is an officer, Douglas Dunn, this is your item, but let me ask, we have two speakers first, sir, so I think it'd be appropriate to have them speak, if I may, that would be, Joni Japamino.
Yeah, sure.
Welcome, Ms. Japamino.
Pleased. I was at that meeting when that was discussed, and I specifically asked if the firefighters were going to benefit from it, of which I was told, no. Another person asked if they were going to, no, I asked if they were not going to benefit if it was going to hurt them, take their hours away. Someone else asked if they were going to be able to apply for those jobs, at which point you said, "No, it's a violation of the Employment Act." So, therefore, I'm a little confused here on the nepotism and how it's going to benefit a firefighter with neither one of those job descriptions that were voted on were going to actually help or hurt this person. Nepotism by ARA statute has an interesting definition that you might look at. One person is not going to benefit from that vote from last week. If there was such a question, why wasn't the question asked at that time, like we do in school board meetings, why wasn't legal counsel asked at that time if this person was overstepping, if that was, if this was actual nepotism or conflict of interest? I find it a little disturbing, because now it makes me wonder if I was told, and the public was told the truth about the reason why those part-time position job descriptions were voted on. I find it pretty insulting watching a council member be pretty much attacked and accused of something that didn't happen. It had been one thing if she was voting on pay, if she was voting on performance, if she was voting on promotion. If we want to look at perception, some people say, "Well, the perception," every one of the things that get voted on, there's a perception linked to it. Cher Cal, when you guys voted on that, there's a perception, some of you that are associated with that. The Science Center, for that matter, there's a perception that some of you are closely associated with that, so is that nepotism, is that conflict of interest? Again, I think before something like that is stated, the definition of nepotism and the definition of conflict of interest per Arizona State statute should have been looked at before it was publicly thrown out, and the council person, not council person, the legal person probably should have been here tonight, too, that was here at that meeting the last week.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome, Ms. Japamino.
I think my, Ms. Japamino said a lot of things that I wanted to say. However, it says on this piece of paper... However, it says on this piece of paper that I have in my hand that they are going to direction to the city attorney, emphasis, and if necessary, the Arizona, Arizona Attorney General. That sounds like a threat to me, to review the tapes. There was nothing on those tapes that said that she was increasing pay for her son. That boy has been on that, and he is one hell of a firefighter. I don't understand why, after all the years that she has served faithful home, I was on council for twelve years, and she had two years on this. She had four items. And she's done one of the job. She does her paperwork, she looks out for the people in this town, not the firefighters, the people in this town. That's why I was a firefighter. That's all I want to say. It really sounds like a threat to me, which is ludicrous.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Dunn.
Based on what's been said here, I feel would be useful to clarify what constitutes conflict of interest and also would benefit a discussion in terms of relationship, our relationship, council and mayor with staff, city, city manager, department heads, and the employees. And would like to, pardon me, specifically like to move that.
We can't, again, I'm sorry, sir, we can't. We can't vote. The agenda item is discussion and direction, unless I'm incorrect, the council.
Typically, discussion and possible direction means just to the council whether they want you to do something or not, just like you're good with, with that. Technically, could you vote on it as a direction? Yeah, you could, but typically it's not necessary.
I'm confused. What I'm wanting to say, I'd like to request a discussion, a work session regarding conflict of interest and, and relationship between staff and city council members. And to clarify those two issues in terms of, and I'm gonna come up on other, other cases and the other council persons, and I think it's something in which we would benefit from clarification in terms of what constitutes conflict of interest. I think that certainly nepotism is, is an incorrect word, and I apologize for that. We had a legal clarification sent in on that, and so I apologize for that. I do think, again, anyone can review what happened on those two agenda items, and I have left any questions in terms of what constitutes conflict of interest and what constitutes proper relationship between city council members and the mayor with staff, city manager, department heads, and individual city employees.
Would, would you be satisfied with the fact that, as Mary indicated, I will in fact have a, a work session put, put together?
My job.
All right. And for some reason, if I fall down, two of you can go together and have that done. All right. Ms. Klein.
Okay. So in-state statute, Mr. Dunn, conflict of interest is defined as, essentially what it says is that remote interest, well, I'm talking about remote for those that are substantial. Remote interests are so minor that they do not constitute illegal conflicts of interest, and that any interest which is not remote, as detailed in state law, is substantial. If you only have a remote interest in a matter before the council, then you can vote, participate in the discussion. And here's what law defines as a remote interest. And it lists, and then, but on number nine, a member of a trade, business, occupation, profession, or class of persons has no greater interest than the other members of that trade, business, occupation, profession, or class of persons. A class must consist of at least ten members to qualify the interest as remote, which we have here.
Thank you, Mayor.
No other than?
Well, I, I will indicate that that's why we're having a work session put together for legal council to be able to, you know, train in session, do this for all of us, rather than us doing it to each other.
Okay, you know, but that's fine. But this is a, I felt a personal attack, and I want to respond, and I have every right. So.
You actually have a right at, at the left, that's right.
I would not knowingly violate the city charter, state, or federal laws that we swear to uphold when we take office, unlike some, which is why I double-checked with Ms. Ordunio, city attorney, right before the start of the October second, seven p.m. regular session of the city council. She assured me I was okay and good to go. In my years as council member, I've been asking questions as a way to clarify an issue for better understanding and for transparency. So I was a bit surprised when Bill Higgins emailed city clerk Coronado, two city attorneys, the city manager, the mayor, and all city council the next morning. The message itself leads me to believe that this was discussed possibly among some council members beforehand. Shouldn't he have questioned it during the meeting? And if I was in violation, Ms. Ordunio would have stated so and stopped me. Neither happened. Ms. Ordunio answered by mail via Ms. Coronado, which read, "Councilmember Higgins, we researched this issue ahead of last night's meeting and contacted attorney Christina Werth from the League of Cities and Towns for her opinion, which is below. Based on her opinion and our research, councilmember Klein did not need to recuse herself from the last, from last night's vote. That was her legal opinion, of which I am covered by, and it should have been a non-issue with that question." Imagine my surprise when the potential agenda came out on Wednesday, October tenth, a week later, with Doug Dunn's request for discussion and possible direction to city attorney and if necessary, Arizona Attorney General to review tapes of council meeting of October second, 2018, agenda items eight and nine, to determine whether there is evidence of nepotism and conflict of interest on the part of councilperson Klein to financially benefit a family member and the Visby Firefighters Association Local 2146, of which he is an officer. And the fact that the mayor allowed it to be placed on the agenda after Ms. Ordunio's reply to Mr. Higgins. Given all of this, I am of the opinion that this is a personal attack. Your animosity towards me is unprovoked, and contrary to your belief, I'm not as stupid as you are. Those who know me know that I am by the book kind of person, and in spite of what the mayor spews and interviews, I do my research, as this councilman looks through. So believe it when I say I did look thoroughly at a possible conflict, and according to ARS, there is not one. I then sought the opinion of a retired Superior Court judge who confirmed the same. Our own city attorney also researched the issue and came to the same conclusion. In fact, in between the work session and the regular session on October second, I double-checked yet again and was told I was good to go. If I was in violation, don't you think she would have spoke up and stopped me, as that is her job? Furthermore, I have never hidden the fact that I have a profound respect for the service and sacrifice of our public safety personnel, or the sacrifices that they make every single day, be they law enforcement officers or firefighters. I have held this belief all my life. It will not change today, tomorrow, or beyond. So yes, I will continue to support and fight for public safety. So in conclusion, your attempts to silence me, intimidate me, harass me, and humiliate me, don't faze me in the least because I don't give two shakes as to what you think of me. But when you have audacity to drag in employees and the unit, that's where I draw the line. And having said that, I would move to forward Doug Dunn's complaint to the state attorney general's office for a full investigation.
Second. Is that a proper motion, council?
I'm sorry?
Is, is that, apparently Ms. Klein made a motion, and it's been seconded. Is that a proper motion considering that the agenda item is especially possible direction?
Oh, I didn't hear the, I'm sorry, I didn't hear this thing to it. Go ahead.
Ms. Klein, would you repeat your motion? Just the motion.
I move to forward Doug Dunn's complaint to the state attorney general's office for a full investigation.
Second.
Yeah, just realize that we can't guarantee that the AG's office will begin to with it, all we do is forward it to them. And the second thing is, we've been working through, received in Werth, the general counsel believes, cities and towns on this. She is aware of the background. That might be another avenue too, but if that's, motion that's, that's here, we'll, that's what's passed by the council, we'll follow it.
Right, I'm not, and I'm not questioning the motion. I'm, I'm just questioning the, the timing. I want to make sure that, that it is authorized under this item, that's all.
Yes, we would consider that direction. If the council approved that motion with at least four votes, we'd consider that our direction.
Sure. All right, we have a motion, and we have a second to forward Mr. Dunn's complaint to the AG's office. Ms. Coronado.
Councilmember Klein? Aye. Councilmember Hanson? Aye. Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Dunn?
May.
Councilmember Lindstrom?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Nay. Motion fails. Four to three. Item number ten, city manager's report.
Council has a report, please.
Thank you. Mr. Higgins?
I don't agree here.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second, those in favor, in favor, signify by a state of aye. Close, same as aye.